All right, we ready? All right, everybody, welcome to another edition of the Leadership in Live Podcast with your host Ricardo Rice and my co-host.
Simone Shari.
All right, so we are back in the studio and yeah, we're back. So let's, what's going on? Well, let me say this. So I'm trying to think what has happened this week? What kind of week has it been for you? It's been a good week?
For me, it's actually been a really crazy week. Like, it's been from day to day. Trying to keep track of what day it is. It's been really, really nice for me. But I've been trying to be prayerful. I've been trying to stay in the right mindset.
You need to do yoga. I told you, you need to do yoga. You need, I mean, you need to be centered and all that good stuff. And make P go with you, because I think she would really enjoy it with you.
Oh, she loves it. She does a lot of that stuff on her own.
That's my spirit. He's my spirit animal.
I think y'all have a lot in common. It's so crazy. But no, I've just been just paddling, doggy paddling, just trying to keep my head above water this whole week, basically, if I'm honest. But my sister-in-law is in town, so we're gonna host her this weekend. It's her birthday, so that's, so I'm excited for that. She's a couple of years younger than me, so I get to feel a couple of years younger, vicariously.
You're not, what are you, like thirty, what are you, thirty-five?
Hell, no, I'm not no thirty-five.
Thirty? Wait a minute, now what we not about to do?
Thirty-one.
What we not about to do is act like age is...
I'm a ripe thirty-one.
Did you say ripe? So you're a melon now? You're a ripe thirty-one?
I'm a spring spry thirty-one.
Oh, my God, whatever.
Christ almighty, thirty-five.
Whatever. No, this week has actually been very like, so the TV show started filming back Monday, and the guest was Gary with the T from Dish Nation, which I don't even have to put into words what that whole experience.
Please describe the experience.
Gary is a character, like, but I actually feel like he was very moderate compared to what I've seen him be, which I was like, you know, go for broke, whatever you want to do, you do that, because it's all to the good. But yeah, he was interesting, to say the least. You have to watch the episode, but it was very interesting. And then, right after that, I interviewed Anthony Hamilton, which was crazy, like, it was so much fun. I forgot I was actually talking to a celebrity. Like, it was just so much fun. He was so relaxed. His album comes out today, actually, Love is the New Black, and he says that he wants the fans, he want y'all, us, to have a blacky-black experience. Those are his exact words. He want to have a blacky-black experience, just black love and all that good stuff. He has features from Jay Hud, Little John, Rick Ross. So this album will be very interesting for him, and shouts out to him, because this is his first album off his new label, My Music Box. So he has, he went independent and started his own label, and I wish him all the success. Hopefully, he'll have the same love and success that my homegirl Lettucee had, because this is her first album on her own label, Wild Card, which was absolutely amazing, and I think she won her first Grammy from anything. So shouts out to Lettucee. I love Lettucee, she's life. And so I hope he has that same level of success.
I was gonna say, I caught that interview was remarkable. You did, you did absolutely remarkable. It was such a great interview.
Because I ran.
It seemed very natural. It seemed very just perfect, like y'all were old friends and had already talked before.
You know, that, and that's actually what it felt like, like, he was so just cool. It was just like, like, I'd, I've been laughing a lot lately. I don't know, I was like laughing the whole time with him. The episode on Monday with Gary, I don't think I got a lot of words in, because I was laughing half the time, so it was...
Understandable.
The team was like, you almost fell out your chair. I was like, you're probably right. Like, it was just hilarious. So it's been an interesting week so far.
Yeah, it was educational, too. Because you guys ask him questions a lot about, like, why he's doing what he's doing now, like, the direction change and being independent. And I was like, that's great, too. Like, that's, I also love hearing about what people are doing on the business side of what they're doing, if they're not in business. Like, I, I love that part, too.
Well, I think we covered that when it first happened, or at least, I think I brought it up, about a year ago, where they were saying that a lot of veteran R&B artists were migrating away from big labels, because they're discovering that these labels... I mean, and naturally, there are labels that are chasing money, and a lot of them don't value R&B music, because it's not huge like pop music. So a lot of the veterans, Lettucee, Anthony Hamilton migrated away from, was like, no, we're gonna do our own thing and have found success. So like I said, I hope Anthony follows that same line of success that Lettucee has found, because, you know, when you're in charge, you can do what you want to do. And he has his album, and he would say he already has an artist that he signed. So I've seen very big things for him coming up in the future, and I'm very excited.
Yeah, it's very cool.
And then Sunday, I'm attending an event, which I have to look at the details, but I just know Jennifer Lewis is gonna be there. It's some kind of book reading for this guy that wrote a book. And I think she's, they're reading excerpts from the book, and I think Jennifer Lewis is one of them, and that was on my bucket list to be in the same room with Jennifer Lewis. So just a little thing to her security, I will be gunning for her, like, in a good way, like, trying to get a picture and a video, so I'm warning you upfront. So if you're gonna attack him, you better be ready, because I'm about to fanboy out for real, for real, because I love Jennifer Lewis.
Speaking of characters, like, she is a character.
That is an understatement, like, no, but just...
My God.
Everything she does.
I didn't read her book, but I got the audiobooks, I could hear her narrate it.
Oh, my God, you're the only nerd I know that has audio books.
But she is like, it is like just pure entertainment. Like, she is a character. She's not just, she can act, of course, but her actual personality is also just...
I mean, she's Jackie Washington. So I mean, she's Jackie Washington. So I mean, what are we, what are we gonna do? So I'm really excited about that on Sunday, but it's been a very good week, so I'm very excited about it. But now, let's get into this, let's get into the crap that's going on now.
Well, let's, we don't have to go straight into crap. There's so many other things. Okay, so let's start on something positive.
Oh, there's something positive? What's that?
Yes. So Georgia reportedly has a record-high voter registration rate in the state, and as of right now. Now, we know that voter registration doesn't necessarily mean voting, but we do have a high, the highest voter registration rate right now, which I think we were in the top, the low, excuse me, not the top, I was gonna say the top worst, really, so we were in the bottom ten of the fifty states, because we were of the top ten worst states for turnout, and now, and for registration. And now, we are the highest state for registration. So hopefully, this will translate to turnout, because twenty-twenty-two will be a very important year for our, for our state. But I thought that that was at least a really big celebratory victory. Like, we all know about a lot of the work that Verifite did and getting out the vote. We also know a lot about the voting challenges, voting amendment, voting restriction bills that came out of the last legislature. So the registration rate right now, though, is very, very, very strong, which I think is a sign that people are staying on top of it, that, that, you know, they're not just giving up on this, especially pushback like that, I think always creates activism, and I think that's a good sign for, for what's to come.
Well, that's the scary part, because in the midst of this, now we're rezoning districts and stuff, so now we gotta watch out for gerrymandering, which I'm sure is gonna be prominent and full center at this point with all the stunts and shows they've been pulling. So I'm happy about that, but at the same token, that explains the ripple effect that has gone out now with this real suppression of voting and things of that magnitude.
So, I was gonna say, so to that exact point, so Stacey Abrams, right? Never, I think we're...
Have we heard anything from Stacey? Where are you, Stacey? Are you running for, look, we need, I know Stacey is sitting back, you know, living a high life, which she's absolutely earned, but Stacey, we need to know if you're running for governor, because if not, we need to try and do something to get somebody that can actually win. But I think she is, but she's probably biding her time, which I'm not mad at, but at the same token, if she's not gonna do it, we not, we kinda need to get somebody, you know, at the forefront and start some kind of wave, if she's not, somebody, whoever that may be.
So they were talking about this a little bit on Political Rewind this week off and on, and Andrew Young was also talking about it and giving his take on it. So the thing is, she kicked off her national tour this week in Texas, and she's got like all these stops planned. I think St. Louis is one, I think Baltimore is one. She did write a book, but really, she's actually going, I think, to just do some general speaking. I don't know that she's just, you know, there for her book, and a lot of people were thinking, well, this is kind of the beginning of her tour. Remember, we said we think she just kind of couple campaigning with, you know, this book and kind of keep it under the radar.
Get chasing, get in her bag, yeah?
So here's the thing, though, is that she has said that she wants to be the President of the United States, and she has said that very clearly, but she's also still said that she's still considering whether or not she'll be governor, or whether or not she will run for governor in twenty-twenty-two. She's, she's the target of all the Republican attacks.
Literally, like, she's public enemy number one.
They're, right, they're expecting it. They're already just throwing money at trying to defeat this woman, and she has not technically announced yet. I, I, you know how I was just confident? I think I even said on the show, like, oh, she will definitely be, I'm, I'm starting to get...
Oh, that she might have other stuff she wants to do, like, and can do?
Maybe she's thinking about the presidency, which is what she said, and maybe she's thinking about it for twenty-twenty-four or twenty-twenty-eight. But the problem with that is, she, she's been a House Representative before. Why not govern? Governor is like such a perfect...
She has no real experience to go right into, just say it. That's what you, that's what you wanna say, because I was getting ready to say, she has no real experience to walk into the White House, but we can't say that, because Trump did it. So now the mold has been broken, so she actually might be able to pull it off, I don't know. But it would make more sense to come in technically, and people get mad when you say it, but the reality is, Stacey did have a very big hand in flipping Georgia, a very big hand. People get upset when you say that, so I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna give her soul credit, but she had a very big hand in flipping Georgia. The fact that you've been able to pull something off to that magnitude says a lot, but you still need some practical working knowledge, and being governor first would really prepare her for what she's gonna walk into, being the first woman and black president of the United States of America.
I think so. I mean, and we know that Kemp is gonna run, certainly, he's already working on his own reelection, so I think that's important to consider. He has called like a special session to redraw those maps, so like, I think we, we already said, like, around November is when we'll kind of see where the lines are and how the redistricting will work. But that, but that's a big deal. That's really informative, and I don't know who the Democratic option, like you said, will be if it's not Stacey. So while they're putting all these maps together and like making all these decisions, like, these are all decisions that will impact her, that will be important for her, and I appreciate the national tour.
Which, well, that's not be, that's not be crazy. I'm sure that, that Stacey has a team that's keeping an eye on what's going on in Georgia, I'm sure. So I'm sure she's getting briefed about all the movements that are taking place, and I'm sure she's still having conversations with a lot of the boots on the ground. So I don't think she'll be oblivious to what's happening, and I think she'll chime in if she needs to, but I think, you know, right now, she's chasing her bag.
I see the benefit in falling back, I do, but touring the country, if you plan on being governor here, it's still, it still kind of feels like, why?
Well, let's kill, think about it, though.
Makes sense if you're running for president.
But it kills two birds with one stone, because now if I decide that I'm gonna be president, I already kind of got Georgia on lock. They already think I'm doing it, it's already pretty much on lock.
We're in the backseat.
Exactly, so kill two birds with one stone. Okay, so I know I got Georgia good, I got the boots on the grounds, they kind of answering to me, they keep me abreast of what's going on. Meanwhile, I'm gonna go actually become the heart of the United States by traveling around and encouraging particularly women, particularly white women, I'm sure, and, you know, kind of tickling the ivories, so that when I win governor and change Georgia completely around from the inside out, then I'm really primed to be president. It's actually a genius plan when you think about it. Who owes the Stacey?
I wanna know what she has to say about this crime. I wanna know what she has to say about Atlanta, the city of Atlanta, and this sort of buckhead cityhood effort.
They're getting real serious about this whole bucket thing.
I, I think that these are issues she could be weighing in on. That's all I'm saying, that there's, there's prime, there's stuff to do, you know, it's not like there's nothing to do. There's a lot to do right now, and there's a lot of decisions that could be made between now and next year.
Well, as somebody who puts out dumpster fires all the time for my own organization, you gotta pick your battles. So again, I feel like with Stacey, she's got Georgia on lock, like, that's why the Republicans have made her public enemy number one. She has Georgia on lock. So why get into battles and stuff about this foolishness when I need to go take over the world, literally? It makes sense, you pick your battles. You cannot fight every battle.
That's fair.
You take care of the bonfire, and then you slowly put out the dumpster fires when you get done with the bonfire. The bonfire is the United States in general. The dumpster fires are all the crap that happens in Georgia.
Yeah, well...
Like, those are the dumpster fires.
That's horrible. We'll just, we'll just have to kind of see. I just, I just hope, I hope nothing too consequential happens between now and then, and again, you know, Kemp is gonna really want to be reelected as well, he's gotta focus on that. Trump, every other week, he had been silent for a while, he's now starting to speak up again, because he would very much like to insert his opinion on whether or not Kemp can be reelected, so we'll just, we'll just kind of have to.
Why are we still counting votes from the presidential election? Why are we still doing that? I read an article today, I think it's...
Arizona?
Arizona. Why are we still counting that?
Because we have, you know how long these processes take. They take a long time.
Maybe because we're not used to hearing about it, but I'm like, why are we still counting stuff from the president?
And maybe that's why he's starting to speak up again, maybe, maybe just because it was another, sorry, no.
Literally, it's like, you, once again, you lost, like, bro, are you seriously still riding this train? And there's still serious people riding this train with you? Really?
In fact, prosecutors just lost a fight. They were trying to keep some of the footage from the January sixth Capitol takeover under seal, so now there's gonna be even more footage of that. I'm sure we'll see it in the coming weeks. They were trying to call it some sort of a state secret and keep it underground, but that is going to start coming back up. So we, we were talking a little bit before the show about like the climate, the general like climate and energy. I still stand by my opinion that I think a lot of the tension has calmed a bit. I do feel like there is less tension in the air than the way that I felt on January sixth, January seventh, when I really thought I was about to live through a civil war.
I don't think, I don't think that's off the table, but...
Well, right, listen.
I don't think that's off the table, but actually, to verse that point, actually, I think it's about to get bad. After months of negotiation, a bipartisan effort to move forward with federal police reform legislation has officially ended without a deal. Senator Cory Booker and Representative Karen Bass, both Democrats and Republicans, Senate Tim Scott led the talks, but they say complex issues like qualified immunity, which is what we've been talking about for the last year, and were rioting and all that stuff about, a legal doctrine that protects police officers from being sued in civil court, kept them from finding a plan that would garner bipartisan support in the Senate. After the breakdown, President Biden criticized Republican leaders for rejecting even modest reforms, and is now considering, huh, taking executive action on policing reforms. Meanwhile, a group of former and current black women officers have filed a class action lawsuit against the Metropolitan Police Department in Washington, DC, claiming racial and sexual discrimination. I don't know. Civil War, we might be back on the table for black folks. Like, we've been fighting for this for a year, we've been going back and forth this for a year, like, at this point, I feel, and I'm starting to feel like everybody else, do black folks really matter about it? I'm starting to really wonder, and Kamala at that point.
This isn't about Biden.
Well, I'm not talking about this in general, because it's other stuff, too.
Congress has to pass this bill.
But he could do an executive order, he's done it for fifty thousand other things at this point.
Well, they have to agree on the language of the bill. Like, they couldn't, they couldn't work on, they couldn't even get down to what should work. Democrats felt like it needed to be, they felt like it needed to be, what did Tim Scott say, Republican Tim Scott? He said that they were going for perfect, and they passed up good along the way, because they just wouldn't settle for, for what they were willing to compromise on. But police unions are very powerful, like the National Sheriff's Association, I know our State Sheriff's Association are... They have too much free time.
So that's not what I expected, you just said broken.
They're, they're busy, you know? You know, like, who else is busy? Satan, right? On the national level, I'm sure they're even worse. And, and between the squabbling between police unions and the sheriff's associations, I expected Republicans to put up a big fight about this, and I just, I don't know why it fell apart. I don't understand why it fell apart, but I do know that it didn't get high enough for us to be blaming Biden for it.
Well, it's just, it's not even just that. It's just the way everything happens. He's like, once again, I feel like black folks are at the bottom of every totem pole. Like, it doesn't matter how you look at it, from the reform, the John Lewis Act, to the George Floyd Act, to now we're talking about refugees from Haiti trying to get in, like...
Well, others say it's the defund the police rhetoric that made the bill fall apart. That's what some people have said, that there was just too much of that, that phrase being flung around, didn't have any context, it made people nervous. A lot of people said that that's the reason why, that the deal was never reached. But I'll also say that, so a big part of this problem, I think, or I think one of the biggest people who's gonna suffer politically is Cory Booker, because like when he was one of the twenty-nine or forty-nine Democrats that were in the running for president, I think a lot of people had really high hopes for him. Like, he'd been doing a lot of public speaking, his celebrity profile had raised, right? He backed Rosario Dawson.
I'm not saying plus he was Rosario Dawson.
And people were listening to his platform, because he has a strong, you know, platform in a lot of cases with like marijuana decriminalization.
Which is when I took notice of him, when he explained why he wanted to do the marijuana reform thing, that's when I was like, oh, that, I didn't even think about it, yeah, that's good, so yeah.
But he's not a very liberal.
He's not, I don't know why you mentioned words today. Cory Booker is not delivering.
No, no, okay, fair, that's fair. What I was gonna say is, he's not as liberal as people thought. I think people thought that he was just like a black male version of Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez. I thought, I think they thought he was super liberal, and he's really not. He's really a very moderate Democrat who comes from a state where insurance companies have a high priority, and that's why he's been like an enemy of like healthcare for all for a long time. So he's, he's been pretty conservative about that. He's now in a situation where I don't, I don't believe he fought very hard for this police reform bill.
It wouldn't surprise me.
So it's like, I also feel like for him politically, this is gonna be very, very, this is basically his second huge drop, ball drop. He was the face of this entire campaign. He was doing all the talking and speeches about how important it was, but I didn't see a lot of his action around really trying to get it passed and get the word out there. I didn't see it.
Well, see, that's...
And I don't think the people, I don't think he engaged the people to get behind it enough.
I don't really think he knows how to engage people, honestly. I mean, he knows how to talk well, and, you know, but outside of that, I don't think he's really engaging enough to really do a whole lot, because I watched him, like, his stock went up because he's hit the right talking points, but it's more than just hitting talking points. You still have to be able to deliver at the end of the day and be able to engage. Yeah, I don't think he...
That he can't make sense of, make that make sense.
Yeah, I don't think he gets it, and now we're hitting a very dangerous territory for me, it's like, because, you know, a lot of the black political figures that a lot of us are looking to, they're not delivering, and it's just like, you know, I, they were talking about Kamala Harris the other day. You know how I feel about Kamala, like, I understand all that stuff, but at the end of the day, you identified on your campaign, especially when you were going for VP, as, oh, you know, black, 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 I'm a, I think she's an AK, I'm an AK, and I went to predominantly an HBCU. Like, you, these were talking points a lot, you were dancing with the HBCU bands and stuff, and now you get in office, and you're not delivering anything. I understand that, well, she didn't have power. She has enough power to do something, and you're not, these people are just not delivering, and at some point, black folks are gonna get sick of people telling them, Democrats telling them to vote, because if you put these people in office, they're gonna make these changes, then they get in office, they don't make any changes, and when they do make changes, they're selfish changes, like that crap we were talking about two weeks ago, the ninety-million-dollar cop city crap, where the city council, which has a lot of black folks who voted yes to this foolishness, who were you thinking about when you did it? So I think we have a very big problem with our African-American political leaders. So I'm really concerned about that, because black folks are gonna get fed up again.
Bold leadership is, is important, you know? Like, I didn't appreciate the sort of, like, bull-dogery, Godfather-type approach that our former president took. I did not appreciate it, but when it came to what they stood for and what they were gonna do and what they were not gonna do, that was very bold leadership in a sense, which is why I think the second people started talking about defund the police, Trump or no Trump, people just came out in arms and started passing all kinds of bills to make sure that you could never defund police. In the state of Georgia, we passed a bill that prevented any police department from cutting more than five percent of their budget at a time.
Really?
Like, just, yes, we passed that, and it passed easily, passed quickly. There wasn't, there wasn't even enough time to fight it. So no police department in the state of Georgia, no matter what the reason is, can cut more than five percent of their budget. But that's a response, right? Like, legislation moves quick in response to, to mobilization and to fear and to, you know, so you gotta have that political evangelism, like, you have to keep it up, you have to keep it fervent, it can't just be before the election, because right now, the opposition has all the, all the juice and all the energy to fight anything that you're trying to do. So anyway, I, well, I was gonna say, at the top of this, is that I do believe tensions have eased to an extent, and I was gonna talk a little bit about the incidents that have come down. There's still certainly a lot of work to go for the issues that we really wanna see happen. I do wanna add, there's only been a year, it's been less than a year. I do just wanna kind of rephrase that, because every time I hear an article talking about Biden this or Biden that, we do have to be a little careful here. It hasn't even been a year.
Yeah, but it's a lot of, there's a lot of bonfires and dumpster fires.
I think it's so crazy how quickly people just forget the stimulus. You know, they were, they were begging for it for so, 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 so long, and we didn't even know that we were gonna be getting a third or like an additional round. We didn't even know that.
Wait, that came from him?
And we got, and people are so mad. Yes, it came from him.
Mad about what?
Biden. Oh, what else has he done? What else has he done? Like, you spent the money already? Your gratitude, your gratitude left the second you finished spending that money? I just don't understand why there's not even a little bit more patience with this man.
But it's, again, we've talked about minorities and diversity, and you know how I feel about those terms. I don't care nothing about none of that. I'm talking about black folks at this point, African-Americans who reside in the United States of America, who have been sold dreams that we're just not seeing and not getting. You know, we're watching all these terrible legislations get passed, all these terrible policies, and I like, I feel like we're fighting unnecessary battles, because people have gotten back in power, who we put out a long time ago. Like, our ancestors are probably turning over, and they're grazed right now. Like, why are y'all still fighting these same battles and losing ground? Like, I, I've actually started to worry, because I'm like, dang, well, where's the, the new age Al Sharpton? Where's the new age Jesse Jacksons? Like, where are all these new age people that can replace, these folks are tired. Like, we shouldn't be calling Jesse and Al all the time, because they're tired.
Do you think Jesse feels like he needs a new him? That he's not still him?
I mean, Jesse's got over COVID, thank God, he survived that, but these people are tired, like, a lot of people, a lot of veterans have died and gone to glory. They've cashed in their chips, they tired. So at once, they've cashed in their chips, I'm telling you, they cashed their chips. And, you know, I'm thinking, I'm like, well, dang, all the veterans are checking out, and it's like, well, where are the other voices that are, that are gonna take their place? We really do live in a new world, like, it's literally a whole new world.
We do, absolutely.
And there should be a whole new wave of voices. Where are these voices? Like...
So here's the thing, though, there's a much bigger amalgamation of voices, so it is much harder for any of them to reach the top. It's just like, just like what Sterling was saying, I mean, the average person walking down the street, the average black kid that's sitting in a college classroom right now has five hundred thousand people following their every move and everything that they're saying. There are, and there are, there are plenty of voices out there, there's just a whole bunch of voices out there.
We need somebody to get a megaphone, because right now, this is not looking good for us at all. Like, I'm, I'm really, every day, I get more and more concerned about the stuff that I see, or am not seeing, as it pertains to making the world better. You know, I have the twins, so I always think about what the world's gonna look like when Kalia and Caleb turn to adults. They're eight now.
The attention span.
Okay, just like, you know, what happens today, my kids get cyberbullied, and I have to go to the school, and we gotta go through all these IP addresses to figure out who exactly was doing it, only to discover it was an old lady, like, on clickbait. It was some old lady who had nothing better to do than bully kids, like, I think about these things. It's very concerning. Actually, you should be too, because y'all talking about having a baby. So you should really be thinking about these things, like, what is this world gonna look like if there are not enough voices to help shape it and rear it as it grows?
Well, so, I'll just say this, and then we can move on. That's the reality of participation, right? Because we, because of social media, we have a democratized system now, where everybody can have a say and everybody can be important. So the challenge of that is, as wonderful as that is, the challenge is, everybody becomes very, very important, right? So that's why it's that much more important that people actively participate in the process all the time. There was just a hearing yesterday about Georgia prison conditions. The FBI opened up an investigation into Georgia's prisons, because people just keep randomly dying and not making a lot of sense. All these random deaths just sort of keep happening, right? And that required a lot of activism on behalf of people who really care about that issue. The day before that, there was some protests going on down there about a shooting that was left uninvestigated. So there, there is stuff going on. People have to engage in the stuff that's going on. It's not sufficient to just care. I think that's the biggest problem. That's the big gap between where we were before and where we are now. Before, there was still only a handful of people doing a heck of a lot of work, you know what I mean? Like, that's always been the case. But the challenge is now that the people who have to do those, the people who have to do that work are probably gonna need to be a lot less important and a lot more in number. So like, there has to be, until it becomes the average course of business, that the average person is engaging in politics in some way, I think, I think this is gonna be a really challenging age, but people have to do that. Like, you have to overcome that. We can't just rely and throw all of our hopes on the shoulders of a couple of people, right?
This is true.
Who in the past, you know, have easily been assassinated.
Again, you would be surprised, that is not what I expected you to say.
Frankly, you know, with the exception of who you've mentioned, like, the leaders that we've put all of our hopes and dreams in before suffered consequences for that and didn't even see their thirty-fifth birthdays. So at this point, like, yeah, there is no more one or two or three, you know, black messias, as they say, who are just gonna handle it all for us. That's just not gonna happen. It's a new day. It's, it's all on our shoulders, all of it.
Okay, fine, we can move on. I don't feel a whole lot better, but I get it. I get it.
It can be inspiring if you, if you step up to the plate, you know?
I guess that's true, too.
So the last piece of this, I don't know if you're familiar with the situation that went on with Nicki Minaj's husband's history, criminal history.
Isn't he like a sex offender or some stuff?
Well, so, so there were death threats that had been received by the, by the young woman, who, just for anybody that doesn't have any, any backstory to this, we'll, we'll get into this backstory, but essentially, Nicki Minaj's husband, right, Kenneth Petty, had been making claims on Twitter, and they had been echoed and elaborated upon by Ms. Minaj herself, to accuse a woman who he, he was accused of assaulting, of lying, essentially. And, and there was a few moments where she referred to this woman as a white woman, which she is not. A few moments where she referred to this woman as...
Wait, did she say a white woman, or did she say a Karen? Because there's a difference.
Well, I, I think she said a white, she said a white woman.
You sure she didn't call it Karen?
I'm not, I believe she said a white woman, but the implication was that she was not a black woman, that she was an other sort of a person.
Which makes a difference, huh?
And that she was in love with, with, with her, with her husband.
What does he do?
So that I cannot tell you.
I think he's in music, too, I wanna say. I don't think he's on her level, but I think he's in music, too.
But what I can say is that he failed to register as a sex offender, right? And so this is, this is kind of where the beginning of everything started happening, and I think this is where a lot of her outrage started happening. I do wanna say that it is very critical to register as a sex offender, period. Like, it's the number one thing that individuals fail to do that gets them violated from any sort of meaningful parole. But essentially, the death threats that have come out since the interview on, since this woman did an interview this week on the reel, where she had never given a public statement, she had never, she had not really talked about it. She has an attorney now, which she has the right to have.
Is she black? Or is she black, black? Or is she light-skinned?
She, excuse me?
Well, I'm asking, because I want, I didn't, I didn't see, I heard mention of it, but...
So I did not hear her formally discuss her race.
I mean, what does she look like?
She looks, she's black. She's black.
Dark skin or she's like light skin?
I'm not going to comment on her pigment.
I'm just asking.
I'm not going to comment on her pigment. Were you gonna say comments, sweetie?
Oh, she brown skin.
What were you gonna say?
Exactly, like, well, yes, wait, pull that, pull that up, I can't, that's only happening.
What would you refer to her as?
Oh, she's black. She's like brown skin, black. Okay, well, I, look, we gotta, I'm asking for a reason.
First of all, the last two times I tried to tell somebody they were dark, I was wrong.
Well, it was the way you put it, so we're not gonna act like you just...
So I just don't even comment on people. You're black.
You're acting, no, 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 what we not gonna do, what you said was...
You're black enough to get hung, you're black, you're black, you're biracial, you're black, I'm sorry, I see it.
What you said was, either you light or you dark, and you said there was no in-between. That's when I was like, there's pecan tan, there's caramel, there are plenty of shades of black, ma'am. No, there's not just black, there are shades of black. That's, they're realizing the problem.
If you're Jesse Williams, you're black.
Uh, no, what we not about to do is, uh, that.
If you're Meghan, you're black.
Don't make it seem like you didn't...
It's just black, that's just it.
Don't make it seem like you were just like, oh, you know, no, you try to make a point to me, something, either you're light-skinned or you're dark-skinned.
Let's take a sample.
That's, that's what you said. So what we not gonna do is act like...
What I said was, black is black, is what I said.
No, you said, you said there's no in-between. You said either you're light or you're black.
There is no in-between.
There is in-between. There's pecan tan, there's caramel. What you not about to do is act like you didn't say that.
Are these in some sort of a dictionary somewhere? Are they, is there a spectrum and a color scale?
Are we throwing shade? That's what we doing now? Wow. Wow, Simone. Light skin privilege at its finest, people. Light skin privilege at its finest.
Before we discuss this very important issue, which I think we should wrap, even if we move on, because it was about a, a, an allegation. Are you familiar with the, we need to introduce our guest?
The way he got to put on his, the earphones and stuff.
Because I, I guess I just wanna say that Jennifer Hugh has been receiving death threats since her interview.
Oh, that's her name?
Yes, the reel ripped it down from YouTube almost immediately, from after, after having aired, I think because she was receiving so many death threats.
It was that bad?
The barbs are out in full effect.
Oh, I forgot, she does have the barbs.
Everything but a child of God, and vice versa.
Well, if she gonna speak out, she better be prepared for that cuz that's what's gonna happen.
So here's, here's the problem, though, right? Is that this woman did not initiate her, this, this confrontation. This woman did not decide to do a documentary or to write a book or to write a song. She was merely just sitting in her living room, recovering from an experience, having gone through this and being told that she was a liar and a white woman and a this, and a that, and a that, and a that. And only after all of that did she decide, you know what, maybe I will go ahead and say something. I, I think more important than her reaction at all, more important than her at all, is just the fact that when you take a position to say that the person I'm with didn't do something that I wasn't there to see, I think you're putting your own neck on the line. I don't know why. I, I don't, I can't explain it. I can't, I can't put myself in this situation. But I think it's a very dangerous thing to claim that something didn't happen, that you were not there to witness. I think it's, it's important that we don't minimize that if you are a sex offender, you have to register. That's why it's part of a plea condition. That's why it's a part of a supervision condition. And you know I believe in supervision reform. That's my actual job. You, not registering as a sex offender does not make you a victim in and of yourself. It's something that you fail to do, and you could face up to 10 years for failing to do it.
I'm gonna ask you a question, but let me, okay.
Please, please.
Say something in the mic real quick, Jason, so we make sure they can hear you.
Yeah, since we have our guest.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, you're good. Okay, so go ahead and introduce yourself. Tell everybody who you are.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. I don't know if they can see me or-
Yeah, we have a recording.
They can, yeah, this, this is your camera.
I don't know, I'm like, I don't know where I'm moving. I'm talking to. Um, Jason B. Allen, I'm a native of the city of Atlanta. I am running for school board, so this is very unique because I'm like, this is such a cool studio, so if I'm not looking directly at you, just forgive me.
Just, you don't have to look at anything, just, you don't have to look at anything.
Look at us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you don't have to look at anything. The camera's right here, so it's looking, you're fine.
Okay, I have to, this is the media in me. I am excited to be here, though, and running for school board is very important in this election season. A lot of people are talking about the mayoral race and the city council in Atlanta. And forget that the largest landholder in the city of Atlanta is the Atlanta Board of Education. And how are we fixing schools? How are we turning around schools? And so I'm a 17-year educator here in the city that wants to bring the educated voice to the board.
All right, so we gonna table all we was talking about and go straight to him. Okay, so when you were with, oh, first of all, this just in, Sunny and Anna have tested positive for COVID from The View. That's very important. I love those girls.
How is that very important?
Because I love those girls. That's just terrible. Okay, to get into it, when you were with me in January,
Yes.
you were talking about, it wasn't defund the police, it was something else in education. What was it?
Defunding education.
That was what it was?
Yes.
Explain that. It was very good. I want you to explain that.
Let me say the last time we were in a different studio, and this is so cool, I just keep looking around.
Oh, this is the podcast studio, so the TV show was filmed there, the podcast is filmed here.
This is such a cool studio, like, wow.
You didn't look around that, oh, you didn't look around that day you were here. Cuz you were late, so you didn't get a chance to play.
I didn't get to, it's different.
How do you remember that?
Because I, he was the only new one on his panel, cuz it was Sheldon and Frank. I know them, they've been here. He was the only new one, so that's why I remember.
Yeah, I've never been in the actual podcast studios. Anyway, it's very nice, but-
Picture up there?
Yeah, that's why I keep looking. I'm like, oh, I, I don't want, know why I keep wanting to look up there. So, defunding education, we've been doing that for decades. Where we take money from the education budget and we send it to different places. And education is something where we cut the funding almost every year, which is why we have a teacher crisis. Which is why we have a crisis in regards to the numbers of substitutes and can actually fill in for teachers who are trying to basically stay alive as we teach in the pandemic, but also we have a shortage of counselors. We have bus drivers that are still going on strike, saying that we are not getting paid in equitable ways. So when we talk about defunding education, it's 30% of the working poor that is in educational entities across the state of Georgia throughout the nation. I know for a fact because I was a after-school program director that was a contracted position, and we made pennies on the dollar to facilitate quality after-school programs for children between the hours of 4:00 and 7:00 PM. And also, I've been a parent liaison in the district where I've made $20,000 a year. And I've been responsible for over 375 parents, ensuring that education successfully continues at home. And so when we talk about defunding education, these essential positions that really help keep schools afloat, cafeteria workers, nurses, parareligators, that I know I definitely need as a special education teacher are missing from classrooms.
So, I guess this is my question, and this, I'm glad you're here today. What is the argument for not raising teacher pay in all these paraprofessionals in this arena? What is the argument? I don't understand.
It's not an argument, it's a fact. Poverty makes money. And so this is what you won't hear coming out of the mayor's office or city council or for school board members. And let me go on to say this. School board members are supposed to be advocates. They are to be, they are supposed to be the number one advocates at the state saying, hey, our bus drivers, our employees need equitable wages. We need funding for this. We need to improve the infrastructure of our schools. For example, I've had a student that passed away in the pandemic. And we learned a lot around students that have severe health conditions. So in partnering with the American Heart Association, who have said that black people specifically have died triple the rate during the pandemic because whatever this is, is impacting our hearts. Now, could that be attributed to stress? How we eat, being black in America, of course, it impacts all of those things. But also, students that have asthma and bronchitis, especially severe asthma. Atlanta is number one in the state of Georgia for having black and brown children who have asthma and bronchitis. And so how are we protecting them? And so it's not an argument, it's a fact that everyone knows that poverty makes money, so we want to portray as if we are fixing schools, by, uh, fixing schools, excuse me, by having a variety of choice. But who is paying for this? And at the end of the day, the taxpayers, 52%, it's 51.48, however, 52% of our taxes is being paid to go to the Atlanta Board of Education to ensure that every child is safe, they're protected, and they're getting the education that they need. And quite frankly, go to KFC, go to Walmart. Look and see when your Amazon packages are not arriving on time. Look at the malls and any other business entity within the city of Atlanta and the issue with workforce development. Where is this starting from? It starts from education. When people are illiterate, the literacy rate in Georgia is 68%. That's including adults and children. So now we have adults and children who are illiterate. That means if I say, can you read that flyer on that screen? And they're gonna say, uh, something about a popsicle, a, a popsicle?
Can we, can we marinate on that for just one second?
No, seriously.
That, but that's an alarmingly low number. And you're saying that includes adults?
Yes.
In the, in the city or in the state?
That's city.
How could that be, how could that be possible?
Generational poverty. I know for a fact, being a native of Atlanta and having worked in some of the most overlooked and poorest communities in the city, we have schools that have been under-resourced for decades. And what the Board of Education has done is farmed out our schools. Now, I wanna give this caveat as well. I have open charter schools, I have closed charter schools. I have been the board chair of a charter school. And so the issue is not school choice, because school choice includes magnet schools, home programs, monitory schools, private schools, et cetera, so forth. The issue is the responsibility of who is to ensure that a quality education is being provided for every child and that it's equitable. And so what you'll hear in Atlanta is a new word. It's not a buzzword, it's, it's a word that everyone is using now to say that, oh, we're gonna fix education by being equitable.
Equitable has started coming, it has started circulating a lot more.
Equity, it's the new, it's the new thing, right? But here's the reality. Everyone in Atlanta, these, you know, new organizations, advocates, all of these people, board members are saying equity and, you know, a board member was saying, I introduced the equity policy. You introduced the equity policy and we haven't talked about the inequitable wages of the employees in Atlanta public schools who happen to be parents. We haven't talked about the equity gap in regards to literacy and that we allowed the governor of Georgia, the governor of Georgia, the governor of Georgia, during the pandemic to eliminate reading positions. I was a reading teacher. So now imagining the last two years that we have gotten rid of reading teachers and now people are crying, saying that, oh, there's a learning loss. Well, what happened two or three years ago when you are allowed the governor to remove reading teachers from schools and eliminate that position?
So when you say that, was it a policy that, that was directly directed at reading teachers, or they were a byproduct of something else that was passed?
It was, they were a byproduct of something else that was passed, which basically said that here are positions that we are no longer saying are needed in schools. And this is why it's important that parents, teachers, students are in conversations around what equity looks like. Because if students are telling you, I don't want to read, what is the basis behind that? And so we have to say that, well, normally, children like books. They like to look at comic books, they like magazines, they like to be able to go and look at how things are being created. So why is there such a disinterest in reading? We are failing as educators and as board members to say, listen, we need to go a little bit deeper. And that means that we need to be equitable around the resources in classrooms that we are providing.
He's, he's, you are just preaching to me right now with some of what you said. Can I just, really quick, before we move on? I thought literacy for a long time was about much more than its definition, but the definition I'm reading right now says that a literate person is one who can read, write, and understand a short, simple statement.
Yes.
That is the base definition. It doesn't mean that you can't read, like, 19th century Russian philosophers. It doesn't mean that you don't know your Bible. Literacy is really just like-
Practical.
I mean, small. Like, that's a low bar.
It's small, but it's also-
And we don't meet that bar.
We don't meet that bar. It's common sense. It's critical thinking. This, here's the issue. This is what I tell parents all the time when they say, I'm just not satisfied with my school, whether it's a charter school, a public school, a private school, a homeschool program, virtual academy. I tell parents, I said, you need to go to your school leader, and you need to ask this question. Are we teaching children how to learn? Are we teaching children what we want them to know? And the answer is, we're teaching children what we want them to know. We're teaching them, here is the history that we want you to know. Not the history that you may need to be successful in whatever career path, whatever it is in this life that you're going to do. We're not teaching you that. We're not teaching you how to learn. We're not teaching you how to think. And so, in a lot of schools, when you think about literacy, it's the gap in the understanding. We're missing helping children and helping adults to understand information that is being put out there. But here is the bigger concern. This is racism in the digital era. This is what racism is going to look like, because you're not going to be able to understand what the digital codes are. I know this for a fact because I have a, a classmate who works in financial literacy, and actually works for one of the Fortune 500 companies here in the city of Atlanta. And she's the only black woman who is in the room as they're creating codes that are very traditional to racism. Let's look at what that means. They're creating these codes that connect to zip codes. For a long time, they have told people that, oh, if you live in this zip code, you're a criminal, you're a thug, you're a sex worker, you're A, B, or C. And so also, these codes are connected to a lot of various things, including our social security numbers. Okay, you come from this family, you come from this background. And so racism has now found a way to even advance itself in the digital world. And so when we look at literacy rates, a lot of this is connecting to the existence of our people, black and brown people specifically, being able to navigate through the digital world.
So what you, is some of that, uh, somebody just text me. Is some of that curriculum-based? Like, what's being based on the curriculum? Who's designing? Who's approving the curriculum? Things of that magnitude?
That's a good point. So the incumbent that I'm running against, who is also the board chair, did an interview in June and basically said that, oh, yeah, in Atlanta public schools, we are not teaching critical race theory. We don't even believe in that. We are engaged in conversations around racism and structural, you know, systems that may not be improving opportunities for every child. Okay, that sounds good, but that also tells me that you don't really understand what CRT is. And what my school leader would say is, baby, we're not teaching a theory, we're teaching facts. And any educator would tell you that we focus on theories primarily in science. So there is a science to this, but we're not addressing that. Here is the caveat. CRT really is smoking mirrors to take away the fact that we don't have multicultural curriculum in our public schools.
Certainly.
When I say multicultural curriculum, that means when I am teaching children who don't see themselves in the literature that we are preparing them for standardized tests and for books and magazines in the digital world, they don't see themselves. They're not getting books that are written by black authors, that are written by Afro-Latina authors, that are written from people from the Hispanic community, or from the Asian community, or from people who have been in prison. And they were falsely accused. So we have a lack of connection to literacy, and it does start with our curriculum. And for Atlanta public school board members to boast about an equity policy that does not speak to this, we definitely have a concern, which is why I'm running for the Board of Education because I understand the importance of curriculum development. I understand the importance of using that percentage of funds that we dish out in the Atlanta public school system to contractors where there is a low percentage that is going to minorities, including women, including racial minorities, including others who have valuable voices that would impact curriculum in a way to help bridge a lot of the gaps that we see, and it's not happening.
Okay, for those that don't understand, cuz I didn't until you walked with me in January, what is the importance of a school board? Like, what do they actually do? Cuz I think most of it is just like, they, they're just there. Like, we don't understand what they do. What is the power of a school board?
Awesome. I love this question. So, school boards drive accountability. We have superintendents that are leading school districts and schools, and I have seen how sometimes superintendents can be allowed to do things and there's no oversight. And we have to be quite honest, when you are on the job, when you are a professional and there is no level of accountability, there is no one to have a checks and balance for you, it's really kind of anything goes. And that's what's dangerous. Also, we are not really investing in our communities. So accountability is what the board drives. They also have a responsibility of risk management. That's making sure that we are not entering into having so many lawsuits that we cannot sustain the school system. But where are the lawsuits coming from? A lot of times, they're coming from parents who are not getting the services that they need for their children. It's a responsibility of the board to make sure that every child, every child, not every child in Buckhead, not every child in East Atlanta, not every child in charter schools, not every child in partner schools, every child in the city of Atlanta, whether they are in a charter school, a partner school, a public school, a homeschool program, a monitory school, if they're in a virtual academy. Every child in Atlanta is supposed to receive an education that is going to benefit them, that will ultimately benefit our communities and our society. And that is the responsibility of the board. And a lot of times, people feel as if it's not important, but it is important, because guess what? The school board can also enact a splash tax, right? Which means additional dollars that people are gonna have to pay. We manage properties. We oversee the properties that our schools are on. And also our buildings, the central office, this is property that is a responsibility of the Board of Education. How are we maintaining this? What is the staff that we are hiring to ensure that our buildings are quality, that we are actually utilizing the properties in a way where it is most beneficial for the residents who are paying the taxes, but most importantly, for the students who are in our schools? That's the responsibility of the board.
Really quickly, people may not know the background about what else the board has to do, and you said it has to defend against lawsuits, it has to manage risk. But the lawsuits that make the headlines recently sound really, really frivolous, and I really hate that the schools even subject to that. Like, there was, I think, one or two, I don't know if there were, one was Atlanta, I don't know if the other was Atlanta, where parents were suing about the mask mandate. You know what I mean? Like, like, are, are all the concerns of parents, I think when, when some people, especially if you're not working in education, or if you're not familiar with education, a lot of the complaints you hear from parents sound really frivolous. Like, everything that you're saying sounds really substantive, but when you see parents kind of railing against the school, a lot of times, it, it sounds like something like this, like, you're putting a mask on my child, you're hurting my child, I don't want my child to wear a mask. Is that the kind of stuff we're talking about?
Well, those things are included. And to be quite honest, parents who do not want their children to wear a mask, they do have that right. Now, here's the reality. We know that the pandemic has disproportionately impacted black and brown communities. So a lot of the pushback has not been from parents of those- So a lot of the pushback has not been from parents of those children. And so it makes you think on a deeper level, well, here's the reality. If you are sending your child to a school that has a mask mandate, you should have an option. Do you want to send your child to another school? Where maybe there are groups of parents who don't want their children to wear masks. I think that we have to be intentional about how we're thinking about this, how we recreate policies that allow for us to say, listen, we have a cluster of schools. So now you should be able to choose in this community, you have several schools you should be able to choose from. If there are 200 parents that don't want their children to have masks, why have we not thought out of the box? Let's identify a school within their cluster that will be willing. Are there educators who don't want to wear masks, who don't want to be vaccinated, who will be willing to be in this space? But we have to have these conversations and figure out how do we best do this? Because at the end of the day, we know that not having a mask mandate puts more of our educators and more of our students at risk than the few who may not want that. And so it is a valid concern. It's a valid lawsuit. However, the responsibility of the board should be able to push for policies that will allow for the superintendent to think innovatively in order to meet the needs of all of our constituents.
But why are you here? Because you get to be the education expert today. This debate that is not new about charter schools versus public schools, does, how does that work? Like, is that a good thing for African American kids? Because I've actually witnessed a, uh, because I substitute from time to time. And I witnessed Kip Soul Academy. And it was amazing. I was like, oh my God, this is so amazing. And I think they're a charter school, but I think they're in a public sector, something to that extent. What is the, the basis for that argument? Like, are charter schools a better option that are catered to our kind of kids? Or do we really need to rally, which we need to do anyway, about public schools, really making public schools equitable for our kids?
Awesome question. So first of all, I have loved ones and classmates who work at Kip Soul, so shout out to them. We did not plan this.
At all, at all. This is, this is not what we do, but I've been.
This is not sponsored.
Yeah, it's not sponsored.
I would have to say, Ed Johnson, who is someone I respect in the Atlanta community, he's been a longtime advocate around what the public school system should do. And he has definitely defined this and said that charter schools are not public schools. Because most of the charter schools are ran by private entities or businesses that are backing board members that represent various corporations. Okay. Kip has a model that's nationwide, and this has been a conversation that people across the nation have had. I love Kip's program. There are some things that could be changed and improved, that's any program. However, I do respect the leaders and what they do and what they offer. I would also say, and I spoke to the Charter School Network last evening at a forum, and we had to address facilities. And I worked in the Office of Innovation, which is the office for charter schools and partner schools in the city of Atlanta. And having the opportunity to read over petitions for charters, eight out of 10 charter petitions come from the community saying, we are not receiving this in our public school and we need something different. And that is a reflection of the Atlanta Board of Education not doing what needs to be done to ensure that all of our schools are providing what children need. So if we are gonna be upset at anyone about the disenfranchisement of our students with charter schools, public schools, and partner schools, that responsibility lies on the board. Because I could tell you for a fact that most charter schools are started out of the frustrations of parents and community members going to the board saying, we need this, our principal doesn't have this, our principal isn't able to do this, the superintendent is not working with us. And so it is an issue with accountability that again rests with the responsibility of the board. Charter schools are funded differently. And so there are funds that leave public schools that have to follow the public school students that are entering in charter schools. How do we make that equitable? Well, one, here's what's missing. I have been advocating for the last 10 years on a state level that we need to change the funding formula where it's equitable for every school that we are supporting in our school system. But I've been there in the absence of board members. I have been there in the absence of leaders. So if our board members are not advocating on a state level for these things to change, then our system eventually is going to implode. Now, what does that mean? I'll break this down for residents in the city of Atlanta. We have gone through the cheating scandal that the city and every other entity in Atlanta had to help bail us out of. The GOCH is now here, all of this construction and, you know, expansion of Atlanta is happening. The city of Atlanta can't afford to bail out Atlanta public schools, so who's paying for that? Tax dollars are paying for that. They come from the citizens of the city of Atlanta. And it doesn't matter if you are a retired educator, if you don't have children in the school system, if you are in a charter school, partner school, or a public school, we all will be paying for this. And that is going to increase property taxes, which is gonna further push out legacy residents, which are seniors. It's going to further push out bus drivers who live in the city, nurses who live in the city, teachers who live in the city. Those working class families that are in the city won't be able to afford to stay in the city of Atlanta. So that is where we are in regards to charter schools that are happening. The other caveat, and I'll end on this, when charter schools are not approved by the Board of Education, there is a loophole that you can go to the state. And now you have state-approved charters that can come to the city of Atlanta in communities where there is a community public school and say, oh, we're offering something better, come here. And what are we doing on the state level to say, hey, this is not equitable, this is not equity? And so equity should not just be for children who are in charter schools, who are in partner schools. Because what we are saying is, you can be a black and brown child in Atlanta public schools, but you're only good enough to receive equity if you're at a charter school or a partner school. Equity should be for every child. And the Board of Education should have a firm stance on what are we going to do to improve failing schools that does not result in us saying, oh, we're going to close them, oh, we're gonna turn them over to a charter network, or we're going to turn them into a partner school. What are we actually going to do to improve schools? This is what we elect them to do. This is why they are in office and they should be held to the fire to do their job.
That was definitely gonna be my question. Thank you for saying that. Uh, that was gonna be my number one question is, what about the state? Because I know that they, and the state Board of Education, because if the Atlanta Board are supposed to be the advocates, who are the people who are holding those purse strings and, and saying yes or no, or, or doing nothing whatsoever? That wasn't my, my second question there was, I've heard that Georgia spends more money per people than almost any other state. So I'm confused as to how we're spending so much money.
And now I've seen a return, uh, ROI.
That's a great question because where, one, where is the money going? And then also, two, let's think about this. We have a governor who has shown us that there was no value of life in the pandemic. There was no concern for the city of Atlanta. A lot of people have had negative things to say about Mayor Keisha Lance Bottoms and the homeless population. And why would she put boulders under the bridges downtown and in the city of Atlanta? That was done by the state, under the influence of our governor. And so a lot of things that we see in Atlanta, a lot of times, is not just impacted by the mayor, but it is also impacted by the governor who we know has waged war on the city of Atlanta for several reasons. He doesn't like that it's called the Black Mecca and that it's bringing more black people to this area for whatever reasons. Um, but also the pushback against things that are detrimental to black and brown communities. And so this is a war. Education is under attack. It has been for a while. And it's critically important, and in this voting season, that voters understand that your elected officials have a responsibility. It's not to be in board meetings clapping and celebrating the superintendent for 30 minutes and giving each other awards.
Man, I can't stand that. I mean.
Let me tell you, I've been in the classroom teaching all day long. I have parents that have been at work all day long. We have constituents that have been working all day long. We don't have time to come onto a board meeting for the dog and pony show.
All the self-congratulations.
Honest about this when I'm going to a funeral tomorrow for my friend and my colleague who died from COVID-19. She's a paralygion that is interacting with parents every day. We just buried two parents in the city of Atlanta. When I mentioned it last evening and parents were like, thank you for acknowledging this, there was nothing said from the current elected officials on the board, oh, we send our condolences, oh, we, I don't even know if they're aware of what's actually happening. And so we are losing people every week. Parents, what is happening to our children? Teachers, how is that impacting our workforce? And so these are things that people really have to consider. And I'll end on this. One of the things in having lost a student in the pandemic, if you've noticed, I could talk about it, but I don't call names. Because anyone that has lost a loved one in the pandemic knows it's detrimental. And losing a student and then not being able to have a funeral to bury them, what is the closure for children? Children who may not even be able to go to a funeral for their teacher or someone who they've seen helping their parent get a job or helping their parent keep them in their home. And so that disconnection and that trauma. We have been asking not just the Atlanta Board of Education, but also school boards across this metro Atlanta area to mandate individualized health plans. And let me tell you why this is important. Individualized health plans alert school leaders and staff members of students that have severe health conditions. Now, here's my experiment. I want each of you in this room listening, ask an educator, ask a principal, what is IHP? And I could tell you right now, they're probably gonna look at you like, oh, IEP is the Individualized Education Plan. No. I'm saying IHP, Individualized Health Plan. What is this? Are all of the plans at your schools audited? Are they updated? And this is what we've been pushing for the Board of Education to do in Atlanta that still has not been done. And I could tell you now that there are teachers who have no clue what to do if they have a child that has severe asthma. Not just, I have asthma and I'm wheezing, I have severe asthma that this attack could kill me. They don't have a clue of what to do. And so this is why it's important that we have the right members on the board. Because this is their responsibility to ensure that the policies that are created allow for the superintendent to do their job of improving schools. And it's not just academics, it's improving everything for our children.
Yeah. Wow. Because there's so much more than that. It's, it's.
But the state, oh, but you mentioned a good point too about the state. The governor, going back to our governor, the governor has insight over education. Where do the commissioners come from on the education committee for the state? They are appointed by who? The governor. Are these people reflective of our constituents? The majority of the members are white men.
For sure.
And this isn't an attack on white men, but I need someone with the heart of the people to say, well, do we have anyone that has a disability on here? Do we have an Afro Latina on here that's actually representing two different cultures? That can speak to the need that we need to have everything translated in a different language, not just the handbook, not just the important letters that again are congratulating and saluting people in the district. We need to have critical information in every aspect that's being translated. But these voices are missing from this commission. And people don't understand that because we'll say that, oh, this person isn't important, so I'm not gonna go and vote for school board. Well, then that is why we're not seeing the movement, because you don't have people who understand what a 21st century classroom should and could look like.
Yeah, I think we heard from, um, from our friends at the partnership that. Yeah, metro Atlanta students are almost like, almost a quarter, 20, 20 or 25% Spanish speaking by, they said in the next five years will be. Like, so it will become something that just has to be there.
It's funny you brought that up. You know Dana took over.
No.
Dana is now president of the, uh, partnership.
Wow.
And I just talked to Robert yesterday. They already ready for next year to show up. But between them and Frank, I'm ready for Frank to come. Frank is coming from community and schools. Because I definitely want to update on what we talked about last year, um, now that we're back in the flow of things. But I'm not gonna, you don't want to got stuff to do.
I do, uh, because I have a Board of Education member coming on Atlanta today at 2 o'clock. And we're gonna actually talk more about accountability and what does this look like. There's a major concern around the guardrails, and I would definitely tell everyone to make sure you look that up in Atlanta public schools. And I'll tell you from talking to former educators who are retired, principals and teachers, especially those of us who worked through the cheating scandal, a lot of people have paused because they're like, this type of pressure is going to put us back into an atmosphere where we were led into the cheating scandal.
Yeah, because you have to perform.
That you have to perform to a certain level. And how can I perform in the school where my teachers are getting sick? Like, this year is going to count. Teachers are getting sick every week. I know for a fact, I have family members in Atlanta public schools who have been exposed to COVID-19. So talk about having to tell your nieces and nephews and cousins that you can't see mama for a couple of days because she has to quarantine, or daddy has to quarantine, or grandma has to quarantine. And when grandma is quarantining, the, the anxiety around, oh my God.
She could transition.
Make it through this. And so this is the pressure that is happening already in our schools that the Board of Education doesn't really have a full understanding of. Because how many of the current board members have been teaching in the pandemic? They have lost colleagues in the pandemic. They have lost parents that they have been supporting in the pandemic. They have lost students that they have taught in the pandemic. None of them have. So they can say that they're advocating for our children, but it has to be in ways that we actually are seeing tangible outcomes, even for our charter schools. And I, I, I have to say this, that I'm an alumni of public schools. And I know for a fact that we're not doing what needs to be done to do school improvement. But I also know that we're doing a huge disservice to our charter schools and our partner schools by not having clear oversight of boundaries and what needs to happen. Because again, Atlanta Public Schools has for too long neglected public schools and they did not improve infrastructure and buildings. A lot of our charter schools and partner schools are in these buildings. So what does that say to them? How are we really valuing them? We're putting them at more of a risk. And I'm very concerned about that because you mentioned Dana. I know Dana. I worked with Dana. I worked in the Office of Innovation supporting these schools, and they are doing some magnificent things. But they also deserve clear transparency and partnership for Atlanta public schools that will allow them to be able to do what needs to be done and also have better relationships and improved dynamics with our community public schools.
Who's had a mouthful? Okay, clearly you're gunning for a whole episode with just you, and we'll talk about that because this is, tell everybody what you're running for again.
So I'm running for the Board of Education in the city of Atlanta for seat nine at large. I am an alumni, a longtime teacher, currently teaching. I would be the only 21st century teacher on the board if elected. I have also been a district administrator in Atlanta public schools. I've been a school administrator. I've been a contractor. I've been one of the working poor members in Atlanta public school that I mentioned who need equitable wages. So I fully understand the system. I've led a charter board before. I know what policy implementation looks like. I know what innovation can do when we afford that to every child and every school leader and every school model that we're offering. And I think that it's about time that we actually make Atlanta a world-class educational school system. We have all of these major companies coming to the city of Atlanta, those that are already here. And we don't have schools that are performing to the level of excellence that they should be. So I'm Jason Allen. I'm running for school board. I need your support. It's time for change. The season has just changed. And it's time for the season of our governance of Atlanta public schools to change as well.
How do they get in touch with you if they want to help with the campaign or not?
AllenforSchoolBoard.com. That is my website. You can go there to volunteer, to donate. But listen, I also know that a lot of our seniors, a lot of our educators are on Facebook. So you can go to Allen for School Board on Facebook, see some of the things that I've done over the years, see mentoring programs that I've implemented in the community, how I've helped serve the community, how I've been a leader consistently. Uh, my fifth grade teacher is still teaching at FL Stanton Elementary School in the community I grew up in. Shout out to her. And some of my high school teachers actually are teaching there now. And they can tell you that even, my fifth grade teacher said, even as a student government leader in fifth grade, I was advocating then, so much so that every year the fifth grade class went to Six Flags. And I said, well, listen, as a school, student government officer, I want us to give back to the community. And this was in the early 90s. And so ever since then, when I implemented a community service project at that school for the fifth graders to do to give back to the community, they've been doing it ever since. So I'm not new to this. I'm true to this. I've been doing the work since I was a kid. And I think that it's about time that we have someone who is not fearful of challenges, who is not fearful to say, this is not right and we need to improve, someone who is not afraid to say, you know what, we failed at doing this. But we can do this better and here are some possible solutions. We have to be solution oriented. And I just firmly believe that farming out schools and dumping the responsibility on others to fix and improve our oversight as the Board of Education should not simply be allowed to continue.
All right. Simone, final thoughts?
I'm just, can I vote for you in Cobb? Is that possible? A child in the school system, is it possible? I would vote for you in a heartbeat.
But you can connect with our Atlanta Student Coalition leaders in Cobb County. We are in all of metro Atlanta. And so I'm working with students who want to see equity and not just the word equity, but they want to see equitable actions everywhere. And so I have a senior right now who is in Cobb County. And like, listen, we definitely need change here. So if you are in Cobb County and want to connect, you can go to Atlanta.org or go to our Atlanta Facebook page, and I will definitely connect you with our students that I'm working with every day on making sure that we aren't just talking about equity. that I'm working with every day on making sure that we aren't just talking about equity, but we're doing it.
I don't have nothing to say, I already told you, he's the real deal, he's the real McCoy.
More time and another conversation.
Yes.
When's, when's the election date? I don't think you mentioned that.
I did not, I was actually going in on that, but it's one of my last words. The last day to register to vote is October 4th, very important because my students and I, in our off time, which is very rare, are volunteering to make sure that our seniors, seniors in high school and our senior citizens understand the process of actually getting the ID or getting their license, because it can be a little bit tricky, especially with having to do it on a computer with technology. And so it's important that people start doing that in advance. The registration deadline is October 4th. Early voting begins on October 12th. And it's very important for people to know that date, October 12th through the 29th is early voting. And then election day is November 2nd. And let me tell you, if your voting location has changed, that information is available on the website, Secretary of State's website. But also make sure if you live in the city of Atlanta that you're contacting your neighborhood planning unit, because they also have advocates that are working to ensure that their residents know where their voting precincts are. And so I definitely want to make sure that the education around voting is uplifted in this conversation. Because board members also have a responsibility to advocate for voter engagement. And so I want voters to understand the process of voting, what support is needed. If you are a senior and you need a ride to get to the driver's place, contact a local church. They may not be meeting for face-to-face, however, they do still have people that are driving vans. Also, MARTA has capabilities to get seniors to and fro places to get their information. And so there are resources, and I want to make sure that people know that there are resources they can get.
All right. So, I have nothing else to say, because I knew that he was gonna be who he is. Uh, next Friday, so in this season, we're doing a Biden scorecard in different areas, immigration, all these good things. But we also mixed in highlighting African American men who are running for local offices. Jason is the first, and next week our second will be Larry Carter II, who's running for Atlanta City Council District Four. Um, so he will be with us next Friday. He's another African American male we are highlighting that are running for office. Because hey, we need to get these people in office, you heard Jason.
He's a fellow teacher too. So this, when you said it, I'm like, yes, Larry, Larry and I talked together in Atlanta.
Oh, seriously?
Small world, yes. So what is very unique also is that a lot of people who are running in various races I have worked with, either as a teacher, or I have been a teacher and they are a business owner, and I've had them come to my school, or they are alumnis that have come and read to my students. And so I'm so honored and proud of what you're doing because there are so many educators who are running for city council that I've had the opportunity to work with, who I think are exceptional and amazing. So kudos to you for uplifting these conversations.
Oh, I appreciate it, appreciate it. Somebody got to have them, because clearly nobody else is. So we'll do it here at the Leadership Blend.
Outside of Edlanta, because a lot of people tell me that, they're like, I didn't even know this, who's having these conversations? And so we have been very intentional about sharing the flyer for this and making sure that people have the information, because these are important conversations. And there are a lot of connections to people who are running, who have been in the communities doing the work. And this is what I would tell the people, if you don't have a hundred dollars to donate, guess what, my students are donating 50 cent, they're donating a dollar. It doesn't matter because they want to be invested in change. And the people have to be invested in change, because let me tell you who I know for a fact is invested. Big businesses are invested in what our education looks like. And so, yes, it's nothing wrong with working at a Walmart, but our children want to be exposed to different careers and opportunities. And we have to invest in candidates who are willing to speak and work for the people. All right, y'all, I'm done.
You sure, because you're sure.
Every time you mention something else, I'm like, ooh, I know that, I connected that, so okay, that's it for me.
If you hadn't got lost, you'd have had a full hour. But you know, I, I digress, I digress. All right, so we will see you guys next Friday, same plane, same time on The Leadership. Been with your host, Ricardo D. Rice.